Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Salisbury City Council on June 4th, 2018. I would ask everybody to please silence all electronic devices. If during the meeting an emergency should arise, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs. If that exit for some reason should be blocked, please make a left and a right and go down the stairs. Should you need special assistance, please let us know, we'll be happy to provide it to you. And please do not use the elevator if there is an emergency. At this time, I call for a moment of silent meditation. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a special meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Boda and Mr. Irtin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Irtin, Mr. Boda. This is Miller. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for Contract 125-18. That's the Main Street, Block 3, and Riverwalk Landscape Architecture. The scope of work for this bid solicitation will furnish all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for the construction of Block 3 of the Main Street Master Plan, all non-emergency work in Blocks 1 and 2, and the landscaping of the Riverwalk. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, utilizing the city's vendor list, and posting on the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. One vendor submitted a bid by the due date and time of April 20th, 2018, at 2:30 PM. That bid came from George &amp; Lynch Incorporated in the amount of $3,197,879.26. George &amp; Lynch Incorporated was deemed to be a responsible bidder, and their bid proposal was determined to be responsive. However, the bid amount surpassed the project's available budget. Section 2.32.050.C.1.D., Procedure for Competitive Bidding of the Salisbury Code of Ordinances, states that in the event only one responsible bidder has submitted a responsive bid, the procurement may be negotiated with the sole bidder. The Department of Infrastructure and Development coordinated a scope modification, details of which are in the attached department memo. They did this to reduce the cost of work to $1,950,455.99. As additional funds become available on FY19, remaining work may be awarded via change order to George &amp; Lynch Incorporated based on the original scope desired. The Department of Procurement concurs with the recommendations submitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and thereby requests council's approval to award Contract Number 125-18, Main Street, Block 3, and Riverwalk Landscape Architecture, to George &amp; Lynch Incorporated in the amount of $1,950,455.99.
You go.
Yeah, I'm just, the scope of the work that was originally in the document. Our estimate was that it was going to cost $1,950,000. That's what I'm assuming, correct, or no?
Amanda, can you come up and answer some of the questions? Thank you. Amanda has a more detailed breakdown that will help answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay. So our estimate, we were closer to about $2.2 million is what we had available. Part of that overall financial picture includes we have money set aside for the emergency work right now. We still are holding money that are disputed items with the previous contractor. So we're holding aside a fair amount of money that could otherwise be applied to this. So right now, we were comfortable spending $2.2 million.
Fine, that answers my question.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just the difference between the 195 and the 3197. The paragraph simply states that scope modifications include eliminating the purchase and installation of site furnishings and installation of site furnishings on Main Street and on the Riverwalk. Am I reading it? I'm just trying to figure out, did that equal the difference between 1.9 and 3.1?
Not completely. Good question. So the bid was actually 157 different line items. So we went line by line as to what we could accept now and what we wanted to start with versus items that would be deferred and items that would be eliminated. So the site furnishings are something we're eliminating from this contract. We will purchase them and install them separately using a field operations staff to help with the installation. So that's money that we'll save and we'll never add to this contract. We're deferring some other items. So for Block 3, it was important for us to do utilities, you know, the base paving, the curb and gutter, and then we're deferring the pavement until we can afford to add the pavement back in. So we're deferring the last few items that would remain in that contract, sort of similar to the way the first two blocks were done. We're only recommending approval right now with the ones that we could afford. So exactly, the site furnishings did not make up that total difference, but site furnishings themselves were rather expensive, so that was a nice savings to be able to have field operations help us with that.
I know this is, I don't mean this the way it's going to come out, but the order in which we're doing these things, we're taking care of all of the underground and foundational stuff, and then the other things are sort of...
The topside.
The topside.
Yes. So Blocks 1 and 2, the only things that are remaining that were in this bid are topside improvements. So the emergency work that's going on now will take care of all the paving and the streetlights and the sidewalks. This bid's Block 1 and 2 was for all the landscaping, the stormwater bio-retention areas, all topside items. The Riverwalk is lighting and landscaping. So as you can see in our memo, we're recommending that those items be completed by August 31st. The remaining, the Block 3, would be deferred until after the Folk Festival, so a start date of mid-September, and yes, we're starting with all the underground, all the utility work first.
Okay. Jim, another one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So George &amp; Lynch will take the 1.9 and do the scaled-down work that you've asked them to do.
Yes.
And site furni-- I'm just, I don't know.
Sure.
1.9 to 3.1, I just...
Do you...
Was it gold in late site furnishing?
No, let me tell you...
Yeah, that's, I think it was just...
Let me give you some specifics, sure. So the site furnishings, okay, the bid for the Riverwalk trashcans alone was $91,000. So that was a furnished and installed price. The bid to install benches along the Riverwalk was $69,000. So it was significant. It was a few hundred thousand dollars worth of site furnishings that are coming out and being eliminated. Now, some of the site furnishings for Main Street, we had already purchased under the previous contract, so we actually owned those benches and trashcans, and the foundations are being put in now. So there was, the only expense we were saving there was the actual installation, so it's field ops installing those. On the Riverwalk, we're purchasing those benches and trashcans. We have a bid out now so that we can get a good price for those, and then we will have our citywide concrete contractor go in and pour the pads. But for comparison purposes, we had estimated the pads, benches, and trashcans total installed to be about $64,000. So again, that's even a savings over just looking at only benches. So there's a couple hundred thousand dollars right there in the site furnishings. And then other deferred items included installing the streetlights on Main Street and final paving, uplighting of trees. Uplighting of trees is about $118,000. So there were some very big ticket items that we'll defer and look at those costs harder before we decide if we can accept them.
Well, we've got up to like $300,000 or $400,000 worth of deferments, but I'm still concerned that that still leaves 700.
Well, I think that the other thing that was said was that they're holding some money that could be, could be...
Yes. So we are...
Put on that.
We keep a list, so essentially, I'm very conservative, and I hold everything that we could potentially have to pay out to either a previous contractor for this emergency work. So I'm holding more than I think is needed so that we should be safe there. So once those items wind down, we'll know exactly how much more we have out of those pots of money as well.
I think Mr. Irtin's concerned, and I think the council as a whole is concerned, is the fact that we don't want to leave something three-quarters done.
Certainly.
When we, you know, when we finish up, we want to have the product that we approved.
Yes, certainly.
Could you, could you enlighten us as to why their bid would, may have come in that much higher than what we thought?
So we had a lot of discussions talking about that, and some of it was time. When we put this out to bid, we asked for the entire amount of work to be done before the Folk Festival. So by deferring Block 3, that provides some savings. Again, maintenance of traffic was a high item. So by talking to them about other ways to have traffic done, that was almost $200,000 in itself. So there are a lot of things like that. I think most of them had to do with time, and that they were trying to see if they could push this and get it done. So from a timing standpoint, where we're trying to get Blocks 1 and 2 done, both the emergency work and this additional work before the National Folk Festival, and our goal is to start Block 3 by mid-September, we will know our costs on those first two blocks by mid-September. So before I'm putting forth a change order, I know what our expenses were on Blocks 1 and 2 in total, the emergency work and the other half.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right. That's the only item, right, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2487 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Boda. Good afternoon, Mr. Tillman.
Good afternoon. This is an ordinance of the city approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the Station 16 rear driveway paving project. This is the second reading. I would just refer you to the schedule down below, and it indicates that FY18 bond proceeds are basically being reduced from the recycled truck, the dump truck, and the bicycle master plan for a total of $37,230, and that that amount is now being allocated to the Station 16 driveway project. There apparently were issues there with unforeseen site conditions that resulted in the additional cost.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2487 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2488 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Boda.
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY2018 general fund to appropriate additional funds for electric for street lighting. It's my understanding that the cost for the streetlights were raised as a result of a statewide request, and that this is the additional cost that'll be sustained to the city of Salisbury of $145,000.
I'll make the comment before the vote. Knew that was coming. I am going to vote a different way tonight than I did during the previous meeting, and however I do it with great consternation, I have stated my feeling before about going into surplus, and I think that that's a dangerous thing, and I think that we're, as I said during the budget hearing, I have serious concerns, and we need to start building that surplus back up again. This 145,000? Is that what it is?
Yes.
In my opinion, it's not good for the city, but it is a bill, and we are responsible for that bill. So having said that, if there's no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2488 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2490 for the first reading.
Did you vote?
So moved.
Excuse me.
Mr. Irtin?
I didn't hear. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
I was going to vote no, but...
And I was bringing to you, did we put, are we back to the streetlights again? Because that's just bottom up.
No, we've already voted on the, we've already voted on the streetlights.
Yeah, I didn't vote at the time, and you'd moved on, but...
I thought I heard a...
I didn't do any.
Do we put, and I apologize if I didn't see a new agenda yet, did we put electrical, what do we call it, consulting on that so that we can at least hammer him for 15 minutes?
I think we are going to have a special session.
We should, they should bring popcorn and watch TV.
Yeah. I, again...
Well, I mean, I'm just frustrated because, I mean, it's, you know, it's not getting noticed, you know, I'm back and forth on whether I was going to vote for it or not. I mean, it is a bill, but, you know, I just wanted to thumb something.
I think we all have the same reaction. I'm not going to speak for...
Who is, would be other contact in the city for, I mean, I mean, not that we need, but who would...
For which piece?
Who would be watching the public service commission? I mean, I don't think there's, I mean, certainly not for fun.
No, not for fun.
Paint dry, and then this happens when you're not looking. Well, we'll ask Mr. Anderson.
We're going to have to, oh yeah.
Yeah, that'll be fun.
I look forward to that, I look forward to that discussion. All right. So the vote is, let me do it this way. Mr., I'm going to, I'll call individually. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Mr. Irtin?
Aye.
Mr. Rudisil?
Aye, with consternation.
And Mr. He says.
Consternation. Actually, that's IC.
We have duplicate consternation. All right. That takes care of that. And we have a motion by Mr. Irtin. Do we have a second on ordinance number 2490?
Second.
Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of FY2018 general fund to appropriate funds for attorney's fees. Whereas the city of Salisbury has projected the amount of attorney's fees expected for FY2018, and whereas the city of Salisbury's projection indicates an increase of $75,000 in FY18 appropriations is needed in account 17000-513301, city attorney, in order to meet the projected requirements for legal fees for the remainder of FY2018, excuse me, 2000, yes. Now therefore be ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, around the city's fiscal year 2018 general fund budget. Be amended as follows. Increase in the current year surplus by $70,000, increase city attorney by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments?
Mark, do you have any idea how much, how many hours you've spent on the ridiculousness of this, the county's not going to collect property taxes?
I don't have that bill with me this evening, but yes, I could get that for you. I don't have the exact figure for that case, but all I have is the dollar figures with me tonight.
If you could, if you could get that to the council, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, be happy to. And, you know, still going on.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2490 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Do we have any requests for comments?
No.
All right, since we do not have any requests for comments, this meeting will be adjourned. We now will go into the work session. Get that one. And first up on the work session is acquisition of 503 West Isabella Street. Who's got that one?
I'm going to kind of knock that one out, too.
Okay.
I'm going to lean on Mark a little bit, too. So one of the reasons we brought this back to the table after we talked about it at the last work session was just ensuring that the property, if we were to buy the property, that we knew what was in the property, that we weren't getting something that we didn't want. Talking with legal, what we're looking at doing is, in the contract, we can rewrite it to say that we need to have proof of clean title, make sure that there's no contamination, and then there's this period, it's called the discovery. It's a 60-day period where we can do our due diligence and find additional information out, and if we find out that there's anything that we don't like, then we can terminate the contract. So it is, one of the things is to pay for the services upfront prior to signing the contract or doing it once we have the proof of contract in the direction that we got from legal was to put it in the contract and then do our due diligence after.
One of my normal questions, do we have a firm history of what was on that property?
We have looked into, we do not have any residential properties dating back before the '70s, and the assumption is that it was Campbell's Soup, but we've not been able to, at this point, acquire what was there other than, than nothing.
You know...
So there was not a previous commercial building that we had found on record that was in that location.
But Campbell's Soup?
That property, that whole area was owned by Campbell's Soup.
Right.
And then there was that subsequent kind of strip of all those properties that were right there. So from what we've been able to find, there was nothing resurrected on that property prior to the houses in the '70s.
All right, one of my, one of my, just my things is that we make sure that we're clear on any phase one.
And, and that was the consensus of the council at the last meeting, that that's what I thought we were, we were going to get this meeting.
Well, you can't do it that quick.
Well, no, I know, I just, I'm not saying we need to walk down Isabella and find somebody who's been there for 60 years and go, hey, you know, if anything's there. I mean, April gave us a lot of, but you're right about what's underneath of it.
Amanda, what, do you know what, what phase one would cost for a couple wells, roughly?
I think under $10,000.
Under 10?
Phase one is usually desktop analysis.
Right.
Five to $7,000.
Right, they do grab samples and stuff.
Is that what they're more in? Is that a two?
They get more in depth with a phase two. A phase one, a lot of times, they're just looking at documents and the history.
Right. Phase, if something came up in phase one, then we could look at phase two, but I just want to make sure that we're not buying an issue. We have enough issues, we don't need to be buying.
But we wouldn't know in this timeframe, like the 60 days.
Well, 60 days, they could do, they could do it.
This is my concern. My concern is, this came to us last time, and it was here by this property. We came up with the questions last time. These are the same questions you had this time, unless there's, and we're paying more for the property than it's worth, and that's all fine, and if we offer $60,000 to him five months from now because we've done due diligence, I assume he's still going to take it, but certainly if there's something underneath there that is untoward, then this person needs to know, "Tuck, turn me off." Just, I didn't see that. It's a three minutes. So I'm just not so sure what the rush is, that we can't, that we can't wait and get even more information, because this, this didn't answer...
Is there, is there a sense of urgency for this?
The sense of urgency would be if we were to move forward with a master plan idea, and the configuration of the buildings on that master plan do include this parcel of land. So we would either do a different part of the master plan, or we can assume that we can construct the plan on property we don't own, if that is kind of the direction. So, but timeframe, if you're saying, once we have an answer, is anything going to change between now and the end of the month? No. So there is, there's a super rush with that. Mark, and if I could have you jump in with the process of entering into the contract and then the kind of discovery period, I want to make sure we fully understand how the process is.
What we would do is, is initially, we would chain the property back and see who was the owners of it. If it turns out that it was always, you know, residential, there's less likelihood, we might be looking for an underground fuel oil tank or something like that. What I'd be more concerned about would be like a maintenance shed for Campbell's Soup Company. That's what we're worried about. But I think we can find the basics of that out just by doing the, you know, the chaining of back of the title. The 60 days would give us time to actually look for any contamination on the property or evidence of it, and if we found that, you know, we would have the right to just say, walk away from the contract, or then deal with the seller, because there's all kinds of warranties and stuff with regard to hazardous issues that are in this contract.
But the idea is, we would start that work once we have an executed contract, not prior to...
Normally, you sign the contract and then you, because until you have a cat in, you know, until you got it in the bag, you don't want to start spending money, so...
And 60 days is long enough to do a one?
To do it, I mean, we could, we could say 60, with the right to extend, if we find any, any issues of concern, we could certainly do that.
I would like that added to it. That would be fine, and then I have no trouble with it. If it's a residence, the worst situation, like you said, is going to be an oil tank, underground oil tank, but the other stuff, it does concern me.
Yeah. Vehicle maintenance sheds are scary.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So you go ahead and do a... We'll go ahead and pass this, and then you'll write something into it that allows us to go further if we, I guess my concern is, if phase one is just a desktop, it reminds me of, you know, what we, you know, down at the bottom of parking lot number one during all, you know, that all of a sudden, out of nowhere, there was something there. So my question to you is...
We can get out, if there's something there in phase one, we can get out of it.
Question is, would it, would it come up in phase one? Question is, would it, would it come up in phase one?
I, I think we'd have, from, from my perspective, in my experience, I think it would.
Would it be enough of an issue to, to warrant either a phase two or not warrant?
Yeah.
Just over the years, me personally, and the other side of the, and prior to that, we bought a lot of stuff that, and took over a lot of stuff that, and, you know, I understand the master plan, but all of our master plans really that we have approved over the last year are really long, longstanding things that are going to happen over a series of decades. So a little more time, but Mark thinks it's okay, then I'm okay.
Well, if we put, we'll be, we'll be certainly be fine if we can extend it if there's any evidence of, of concern.
And I think if that language is there, that protects us.
Yeah.
And we're clear that the evidence of concern we're looking for is industrial this, homeowner and that underneath here.
Dump sites, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, if you go back far enough, that may actually be, you know, agricultural property and you just.
That was way out of town.
You never know. Yeah, it was. Okay, consensus? Okay. Thank you. Okay, Amanda, do you have some answers for us? Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to talk about the possible closure of some road access onto Route 13 in the, in the area commonly known as the S curve. I was here a month ago and so I do have a lot of additional information for today. Uh, first off, I included in your package just the existing conditions in that area because I do think it's important to take a, a look at that first. South Division Street on both the east and west side of Route 13 is a right in, right out only. You cannot make a left onto the street or a left out of that street. At Mitchell Street, it is a left in or a right in and a right out only. Uh, what's important about that is that left in, you're not in a protected left turn lane. So it, it is holding up traffic in, in one of the northbound lanes on Route 13 when someone is trying to make a left onto Mitchell Street. So last time we were here, we talked about, um, a, a few different things, one of which was accident data. So we reached out to the police department to get accident data in this vicinity. What is typical when we're looking at an intersection is five years' worth of data. Uh, Salisbury Police Department has logged 126 incidents in the last five years, of which 119 were vehicle involved collisions in this area of Vine Street to Mitchell Street. So that, that is significant. That's usually when we're looking at an intersection, we're in the couple dozen. So this was a lot and those are itemized in your package. We also reached out to the fire department to make sure that this would not impact their routes. And, um, Chief Hoppus wrote a memo for us and he is, is not concerned and saw no reason to object, uh, the closure of these streets, again, because we are directing traffic to the signalized intersection of Vine Street, which is right nearby. Additionally, we reached out to Peninsula Regional Medical Center to get their opinion. We had talked a little bit last time about whether or not they were planning to, um, extend South Division Street back through their campus. And as they've noted in their letter, they, they do not feel like this would have a significant impact on their operations and they do not have a plan to move forward with extending South Division through their campus. It was shown, I believe, in their, uh, master plan in early discussions, but that is not something that they're looking to do right now. So they, they are in support of this and, and saw the pedestrian safety improvements that would result. We have a, an email from Carload Express, the company that's managing the railroad tracks right now. They are very much in support of closing the east side of South Division Street. Anything that impacts a, a railroad crossing, they're, they're very happy about. Um, and additionally, I reached out to State Highway Administration again. Jana Potvin, who's the Assistant District Engineer of Traffic, is here today and is, is able to answer any questions. She also has, uh, accident and traffic data, if you'd like that to be presented. And of course, State Highway is, um, very much in favor of, of closing these access points here.
Okay. Answered my question. Any, any other questions or comments? Okay. We have consensus and to move forward? Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
And you have one more.
I do, I'm your next one. Um, I'd like to invite Henry Europe as well.
Sure, Henry?
I'm getting my questions out now. Everything good?
Good afternoon, Henry.
Good afternoon, Henry, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
We received a request in the Light Business and Industrial District to open.
Institutional.
Oh, I'm sorry, an institutional, thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jana.
Jana, thank you.
Thank you, Jana.
In the Light Business and Institutional Zoning District, we received a request for a daycare. And daycares are allowed through an ordinance permit. Uh, we don't see many of these. You probably haven't done an ordinance permit in the last few years. Um, this has gone through the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing in May on this and it received a favorable response. The ordinance permit draft is the, in your package in the last couple of pages. And it essentially states that per this zoning classification, an ordinance permit is required to permit a daycare, that the Planning Commission did give it a favorable recommendation after holding a public hearing on May 17th. And then we state all the criteria, which, which is essentially saying it's only for this applicant in this specific location, which is 224 Philip Morris Drive. And, and essentially, you know, what they have to do as far as operations and crowd control. Henry is here if there's any specific questions from the staff report or any additional information that's needed.
Any questions for Henry? Okay. Any, we have consensus to move it forward? Okay, thank you very much, thanks, Henry.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay. At this time, um, I'd entertain a motion to convene a closed session. Mr. Boda and Mr. Irtin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Irtin, you said aye.
Aye.
Sorry. And the chair votes aye. We are now in closed session.